All right, it's six o'clock. I think we'll start the meeting now. President Restonetti is unable to make tonight's meeting, therefore I'm in charge of the meeting as Pro Town. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one nation, under God. With liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Rogers, can you roll call, please?
Yes, Councilman Skorinji.
Present.
Councilwoman Riley.
Present.
Councilwoman Friedman.
Present.
Councilman Burns. Councilman Strawn.
Present.
And Councilman Scanlon.
Present.
And President Restonetti is absent.
All right, thank you, Lee. First up, the mayor has asked me to speak for a couple of minutes, so Mayor David will turn it over to you now.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me, President Scanlon?
Yes, we can.
Thanks very much. Thank you, council members, for allowing us some time at the beginning of the meeting. I'd like to introduce some of the other members who are on the call here. I know there are two boxes labeled Dan Adams, but there's only one Dan Adams. Dan, you want to wave for, there's, that's Dan Adams. The other box of labeled Dan Adams is actually Jeff Smetana. And we have Mike Jeff Smetana with United, which is a housing developer. Mike Usalini, if you waved to us, Mike, your little dim in the area that you are now, that that's the owner of United is there. And Peter Cornell in the box above him is the president of Pike, Pike Development. And so what we wanted to do is give an update with regards to the project that we have been literally working on for over a year now, which is the Water Street Parking Garage Project and Housing Project. We have, we've come to terms with both Pike and United. And I have invited them here to talk about the project, talk about their experiences in the, in the field. The nuts and bolts of this are, we're looking at an approximate $48 million project to replace the parking garage and to build approximately 122 units of market rate housing on top of the parking garage. So there are two extremely significant projects. Some of you may recognize Jeff Smetana from United because he was intimately involved in two major Binghamton projects. That's the 50 Front Street Project, which I know all of you are familiar with. That was a 20-plus million dollar high-end housing project along the river, as well as the Twin Rivers Project, which was, which is a student housing project, which was really one of the first student, it was the first student housing project in the city of Binghamton and actually set the bar for how those projects could be successful. And I think it really is an undeniable fact that both 50 Front Street and Twin Rivers Project have played a significant role in transforming downtown in the city of Binghamton and have really played a key role towards the economic momentum that exists today. So I know it's not talk more, it's more about introducing you. I, to the, our partners here in the project who have a vast level of experience in construction and development and infrastructure and parking garages and housing projects inside and outside of the state of New York. So with that, I think maybe Peter, I'd like to turn it over to you first to give a little bit of a background on the Pike Company. And, and then you can, you know, hand it over to your partners in United. I do want to, before I do that, just mention again, Dan Adams. Obviously, this is a multi-year project that will transcend administrations. And so, as you know, you know, Ken Frank is transitioning, you know, out at the end of the year. He's part-time right now. And we thought that it was very important in working with Ken to identify someone that would be here on the ground floor to help negotiate this deal. Dan is a lawyer who specializes in construction projects and development amongst, among other things. And he's been a great help and assistance to us for the Binghamton Johnson City Joint Treatment Plant and all those projects with all those various vendors, et cetera. So having somebody that will be here to bring this to fruition is involved on the ground floor and can handle this just takes, you know, a major weight off of the next administration. Because frankly, this is, you know, this is the largest project inside the city of Binghamton, I think, you know, in modern history. That's solely a, a city of Binghamton project. So we're very excited by it. I would mention too, that Peter Cornell specifically in Pike was involved on the ground floor of the Seven Holly Street Project. They really laid the foundation and created the map and plan for us to bring that project to fruition. And that's a great project as well. So both Peter, Dan, Jeff, Mike, we've been talking and meeting for the better part of a year. You guys really are the best of the best in your, your fields. Very excited that you want to do a project in the city of Binghamton. We recognize that there's been a lot of challenges that have been overcome to try to make this work from a financial standpoint and getting the city exactly what we want. And so I just want to thank you for your time and your attention to detail. And with that, Peter, I'll turn it over you, to you to give an outline of the project and your partners. And please take the time to share with city council other similar projects that you've done inside and outside of the, of the state so they can get a feel with just your, your level of depth and experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and city council members. Appreciate the opportunity to address everyone. I will give you a brief background and history of Pike. We, we are five generations of a family-owned business. Pike's businesses encompass the Pike Company, which focuses on general construction. The Pike Development Company. I am the president of that entity, as well as an executive vice president of the construction company. We also own Lissesi, which focuses more on not-for-profit work throughout the entire United States. Our main office is in Rochester, New York. We have supplemental offices in Buffalo, Albany, and Orlando, Florida. We work pretty much anywhere in the United States. Most of our focus is the Northeast. With relative experience in this project, I have to say that we have built tens of thousands of parking spaces and, and probably the better part of 100,000 or more apartments over the last few years. We are approaching our 150th year in uninterrupted business. Jeff Smetana, who is, I've had an association with for, I hate to say, probably 40 years, or I guess I'm happy to say that.
You don't hate to say it.
Goes to age, Michael. And the same goes for my relationship with Michael and his family. Very happy to be able to work on a project with them. And I'm going to ask Jeff if he can't run through an outline of the project. And Michael, if you would like to kind of give an overview of the United Group would be great as well.
All right, well, great, thanks, Peter. Even though my name tag says Dan Adams, which is a great name. I am Jeff Smetana and I work with the United Group. I thought it'd be helpful just to quickly explain the deal and the structure. I'm not sure everyone really understands. This is going to be demolishing the existing Water Street Garage, replacing it with a new garage, and then building a residential privately-owned apartment building on top of that garage that our company, the United Group, will own and operate. And the way we're working with, with Pike is the United Group and Pike Development are forming a joint venture to develop the project together. Pike Construction, as a separate entity, but still Pike, is going to construct the parking garage. And then the apartments on top of the garage will be owned and will, will control the construction. Those be owned by the United Group. So you have, you know, Pike and the United working together. And then you have Pike doing construction individually. And then you have the United Group constructing and owning these apartments together. You know, this RFP was, you know, looking to replace the garage, create a new mixed-use project in downtown that would bring more residents down into the core. 50 Front Street, I think, did a great job of bringing people into downtown. This project will be priced a little bit under where 50 Front Street is and will bring more people really into the core of downtown. And the new garage will provide a lot of support for Boskovs to really keep them as a solid destination retailer in, in the city. And then also, as part of a pilot and air rights agreement, will be generating new revenue for the city. So it's kind of an overview. I can talk more about the apartment project later. But I'd like Michael Usalini just to give you an introduction. Michael's the CEO, president, and owner of the United Group.
Thanks, Jeff. Thanks, Peter. Thank you, Mayor David, for the kind introduction. And to the city councilmen for your time today. United Group's full-service real estate development firm will be celebrating 50 years in business next year. Well, in excess of, over $5 billion in real estate development. We're a ground-up developer at heart. 80% of what we do is in the multifamily space, doing Class A multifamily apartment projects, as well as senior housing and student housing. We have developed and owned and managed in excess of 20,000 units of Class A multifamily apartments. We've done over 4,000 units of choice-based senior and over 5,000 beds of student. We also have done mixed-use projects. We've developed within the urban core multiple projects. There's a project in the city of Troy where we remade streets. We put in new infrastructure, invested in excess of $60 million. And we're about to do a $45 million fourth phase there. We're very excited about the opportunity to develop and build apartments in the city of Binghamton. There's a, there's a demand down there. We're excited about working with the, the city as well. As a company, we have a construction management group, a development group, and we own and operate our own stuff. We're long-term holders of properties. We also own a boutique investment bank and a broker-dealer as well. We're currently owning and operating properties in 10 states. We have over 200 million in construction, development, construction going on on projects in Florida right now. And probably another 300 million in active developments in multiple states. And we're a 300-plus-person organization. And very excited about the opportunity to work with the city and the people on this Zoom meeting. Thank you.
In addition, Mayor, I think, and I don't know how much time you can tell us when we've said enough, but a couple of things we thought we'd explain is just a little bit on the process of the demolition and the construction of the garage. Peter, if you want to take a minute and just kind of walk through how that process will work?
Peter, you're on mute.
Oh, yeah, Peter, you're muted.
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. So the intent, of course, you all know that you have a substantial structure, port-in-place garage that is in need of some help, obviously. We've looked at the structure, determined that the best methodology is demolish the existing garage and attempt to salvage all of the underpinnings. We believe that the garage is supported by driven H piles. And there's a number of H piles in each pile cap. We've looked at the layouts that we could find on the older plans and specifications. We've determined that a good portion of those, if they are in good shape, once we unearth them, would be reusable. So our plan is to demolish the garage down to those pile caps using extra care where it is connected and over the top of Boskovs. For those of you that shop in Boskovs, you may remember that the garage goes over the top of the men's department. Boskovs is very concerned that that area doesn't get damaged or interrupted for any length of time. So there'll be a certain amount of selective demo that will happen there. In addition, Boskovs HVAC system sits on the top level of the garage as well. And that will have to be relocated. So it's not an ordinary demo project. We are going to attempt to salvage certain portions of that building. And we are going to try and salvage as much of the underpinnings as we can. To ensure that there are no future problems, there'll be selective testing of each of those piles. In other words, we want to make sure that over time, they haven't deteriorated or that they haven't lost their ability to support the load, since we'll be putting 10 stories back on top of them. And there'll be significant testing and certifications before we attempt to rebuild over the top. Anything that needs to be supplemented will be done in accordance with a qualified engineer's plan. Happy to answer any questions if anyone has any relative to, you know, the demolition and the reconstruction.
Mayor, also, I could, I have some images of the project that people want to see them. If I can get control of the screen or a few of the ability to put them up. How is, how does that work?
Our clerk, Lee Rogers, who I believe is on, should be able to share the screen and...
Yes, I could do that.
Okay, thank you, Lee.
So it should be up now? Can everyone see that?
Yes. Can you see my screen?
We can see the, the remainder of the building, yes.
Okay, so actually, this, Lee, you are sharing Jeff's screen or you're sharing the images that Chuck provided to you?
Which one? The images Chuck provided.
Chuck provided.
Okay, is that what you were asking, Jeff, or do you want your screen on?
Well, this is fine. You know, I had some images in the PowerPoint that we went through. Better. If I, can I get the sharing of the screen?
Lead, are you, do you have the ability to do that?
Yes, I can make him a presenter and he'll be able to...
Okay, why, why don't we do that?
Okay.
Are we also able to see the PowerPoint perhaps at a later date? Can it be emailed to us?
Sure.
And, and any information regarding this proposal?
Yes.
Thank you.
We would have included it in the, in the news release, but we decided not to send a news release out first. And since this came together today, we wanted to come right to city council. But of course, you can get a copy of the proposal. You can get a copy of the PowerPoint. We will give you whatever you would like.
Progress. Thank you, thank you.
So are you seeing the screen or do I have to take?
We are not. Lead, can you share the status? Are you working on it or?
Yeah, so we made him the host. And I believe there should be a button at the bottom that says share screen.
Okay.
Can you see that now?
Yep. Yeah, we see it, Jeff.
Okay. So this is, this is the rendering of the building. You can see, this is if you're standing on the corner right outside of Lost Dog and looking down toward Boskovs, you can see Boskovs down, down on the left. So you can see that it's five stories of a new garage. And then on top of that is the, are the additional apartments that will be constructing. It's, what we're looking to do is create a really impressive street presence. You can see a lot of attention to landscape architecture there and have this very iconic building that seems to sort of float over a base. Just really have it be this fabulous building in downtown. So you have a garage, but it doesn't really feel like a garage. It seems like this base of this really, this very attractive building. There are a couple of other images. This aerial view helps, I think, as you're looking there. Again, because kind of the same point, only in an aerial, looking over the Shenango River. You can see how it sits there really impressively and just creates such a dynamic presence there in the city. As you're, you know, if you're coming down Front Street on the other side of the river, you'll see it. If you're coming from the south, it really is going to change that, that section of the city. And then you can see a couple of perspective views, looking at it from, from other directions. And a couple of the benefits are the new parking, the new apartments, and then the pilot and air rights payments that, that we're looking to propose. And then we, when we responded to the RFP, we talked about, I will get into a lot of this here, but a lot of the community benefits, the social benefits and economic benefits that a project like this provides for the city. And something that we talked about being a significant part of this project is, is the pilot. And that's something that I think in every community where we, where we work, you know, pilots just always get a negative reaction. I've worked on, you know, two other pilots in the city, the pilot for Twin River Commons and the one for 50 Front, and then a couple of other projects in Bloom County. And each of them has really achieved the intended purpose of creating new development that would not otherwise have happened and created new revenue for the city or the municipality where they are. And people have different ideas about pilots. But, you know, in my view, what a pilot really is, is a tool that a city, a community can use to create new development. And new development that can occur in a, in a, in a location, on a blighted site, or in a needy neighborhood, or in a location that, that needs help and create a type of new development that is highly desired. So it's a tool that the city can use at its own discretion. And this, I think, is again, is a good example. 50 Front, of course, is a good example, as was Twin River Commons. Any of these projects would not have happened in the city without the pilot. When we looked at 50 Front, we did the analysis. And if the tax, if 50 Front was paying full taxes, taxes would have been $7,500 per unit. A typical project like that in upstate New York, you'd look to pay about $2,500 a unit. So the taxes were three times what they would have otherwise have been. The rents in the apartments would have been $500 a month higher, which therefore wouldn't really have worked. You know, I think that market, that that project fit right into the market and the right slot. And it's filled and it's been a great draw, I think, into the city. So again, this is what we're looking for. The, in this project, the building sits on top of the garages based on the air rights that we're going to pay annual air rights payments, as well as the, as well as the pilot payment. So it, I think, serves a lot of those purposes. We think the design is very impressive. Here's an aerial view that helps give you a little bit better perspective as well on how it looks there in the city. And here's a front-on view. I think this is a great street presence there along Water Street. And I think it achieves a lot of the goals that the city was really looking to do with this RFP. An idea as well, some of the amenities, there'll be really very nice apartments, similar to 50 Front, but not quite as high-end. We're trying to hit that, that price point and that, that hit those young professionals and, and empty nesters. I can see there's a nice roof terrace, open garden, and maybe some other amenity space over here. So the lifestyle will be really, I think, ideal for the resident base that we're really looking to, to attract. Just a quick look at what, you know, the floor plan of the buildings, we'll have multiple unit plans. We'll have some really high-end looks. These are some ideas of what these apartments might be like and some of the amenities that we may be providing. This is a quick look at how the garage will lay out. And then our consideration of how this relates to Boskovs was an important consideration. We've spent a lot of time talking to Boskovs, talking to their engineers, and how this men's department down here can continue to be very active. And the garage really be a supporter and facilitator for their business as well. So that's a quick overview of the project. If there are questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
I don't, city council, I don't have you on my screen. So if you have a question, please just ask it one at a time here.
The president is okay if I go?
Sure, go ahead.
Appreciate it. Thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight. So I'm just gonna kind of go in random order here. So the presentation said that there are 549 new spots, correct?
That's right. That's, that, that number will probably vary in the final design. But yes, that's the current number based on schematic design.
Do we know how many spots are in the current structure?
Approximately six.
This is a net... I'm sorry?
It's approximately 600.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. For the 123 apartments, is parking in the parking ramp included?
Parking will be in the garage, in the garage that will be paid for by the apartment. So the apartment residents will, or the project will, will buy parking from the city in the garage.
Right, so hypothetically, one parking space for 123 apartments. So what's available to the public is, is actually the difference between the two, which is approximately going to be 430-ish, okay?
That's correct.
As it relates to the process of demolition, has there been any consideration given to Boskovs and even any of our local small businesses with respect to the upcoming 2021 holiday and Christmas season?
Yes. A lot of consideration is, is gone into that. This, the work on the demolition is targeted to begin a couple of days after Christmas. So the idea is to maintain the garage through the current shopping season for Boskovs and the other downtown retailers.
And Councilman Skorinji, if I could just piggyback off that. I will say that Jim Boskov's number-one top list request or ask was that we do just that.
Okay.
And so the, the reality is, we would be able to, we collectively, the city and the team, would be able to, are in a position that we could move forward earlier than that. But obviously, because of the points that you're making, and specifically for Mr. Boskov, that is, that has literally dictated when this project is slated to start. Even though it could have started earlier, but we, we believe that's the right thing to do. And we obviously want to support the store and the, and the business community. And as, as Mr. Boskovs has said, you know, that... And as, as Mr. Basco's has said, you know, that next, you know, four or five month period, it would be ideal. Um, you know, we, we wanted to get through, through Christmas. So that's, that's what is determining the schedule.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, with respect to the, the proposal for the demolition of the garage, so I believe there were one or two individuals who spoke about, um, salvaging the H piles?
That's correct.
If those are not salvageable, what does, what impact does that have on the total proposed cost of the project?
Uh, well, it would depend on, uh, the amount of piles that were not salvageable. Obviously, if we assumed that none of the piles were usable in any shape, manner, or form, you'd probably add a million and a half dollars to the cost. Uh, I don't think that you would attempt to pull them out unless they were interfering with, uh, the plan for the new piles. You'd cut them off, leave them there, and you'd drive new piles. But it is, uh, in my experience, it's really unlikely that they are not going to be usable. What typically happens with steel H columns, if, if, uh, water, it takes water and oxygen to destroy a pile, to have it deteriorate. And assuming, uh, there's no oxygen that's getting under that building, you might have some on the periphery, but the majority of the piles, uh, I'm gonna take the leap of faith and say they're gonna be in good shape.
Okay. Um, you spoke a little, uh, actually, the rent, do you have a, uh, an idea of what the rent range is going to be? I know this encapsulates multiple housing units, whether one bedroom, two bedroom, so on and so forth. But do you have like a min and a max that you're broadly looking at?
Um, yeah, we're looking at rents that would start in the 1500s for one bedroom and, um, uh, start, um, you know, around 1900 for the two-bedroom units. Um, and then some units a little larger. Um, and would be, uh, a little bit more than that. And, you know, we looked hard at the market, uh, where, uh, what we, um, the estimated, uh, estimate of what we thought appropriate market rents are there. We did quite a bit of analysis and also the, the primary comp there really is 50 Front and, um, looked at being underneath where their rental range is. And we think that this will be more, um, uh, attractive, uh, for a lot of young professionals. We think that will be our largest target market, but also, um, probably some, um, empty nesters.
Okay, thank you. Um, just two more quick questions. At, at the beginning of the presentation, you, uh, some of you spoke about stakes of ownership and how that, uh, logistically, at least will look on paper. Um, you had described a joint venture, uh, between two partners, I believe, for the housing unit portion. Um, respectfully, and I don't mean this in a negative way, but joint venture, that's like the broadest term under forms of business organization. Can you provide any specifics as to what that joint venture actually is or is proposed to be?
Well, well, the joint venture is between, um, the United Group of Companies, that's Michael's company, and Pike Development, which is Peter's. And the joint venture is going to exist for the development, the overall development of the project. So what, as the developer, you know, what we've done is, you know, uh, put the, uh, design together, attracted, put the design team together, um, uh, putting all of the, uh, we're gonna oversee all of the demolition, all the testing, and the whole process that goes into the development. So that's the role of the joint venture. It's just, you know, uh, two groups where, uh, as companies, we have not worked, um, significantly together, but the, uh, the partnerships with Peter and with Michael, and maybe we've worked quite a bit together over the years. So working together here when the RFP came out really made a lot of sense for us to propose, uh, on the project together.
Okay, so when you use the term, oh, sorry.
Owned by the United Group separately. The garage is, I'm sorry, the garage is going to be owned by the city and the apartments are going to be owned by the United Group.
So when you, you use the terminology joint venture here, you're using that in, in the broadest sense. You don't mean an actual entity that is being created, even if it's sunset to the end of the develop, proposed development, correct?
Um, it actually would be a, um, a legal joint venture, would be a partnership, or a special purpose partnership for the, the development of this project.
Okay, so it, it actually is an organizational structure that is being created, correct?
Yeah, United, United and Pike have created a, uh, a JV LLC that is a party, that is a party to the development agreement that's gonna ensure the performance of the entire project. And there'll be an SPE, uh, owner LLC of the apartments.
Got it. Okay, yeah, so thank you.
For the financing purposes.
Right. Okay, so that, that's the connection that I was hoping I was gonna find. So I appreciate the specificity there. So I'm gonna take this last point and tie it into my last question, which I guess now makes it a two-part. So you said the proposed total cost is about 48 million. So I was wondering if you could provide us with even some sort of a general breakdown of kind of the arms of that, where those funding proposed mechanisms are coming from. And in addition to that, is this partnership something that has to be funded through this 48 million dollar pool?
So, um, the, um, it, um, the overall 48 million, uh, includes, um, the garage, um, the demolition, the testing, the design of the garage, the construction of it, all of that work. Um, that is financed through several city-controlled sources. Um, the, the city has certain resources, some of which would be, um, uh, tax exempt or taxable bonds. And the apartments, which, um, represent about, um, 25 million of that total, 25, 26 million, uh, the financing for the apartments would be 100% by the United Group.
So to answer George's question, the garage is around 23 million with the demolition and the, the construction design. The apartments are about 25, 26 million with the construction and the, and the design. And, um, the financing of the apartments is gonna be done by, you know, through the, um, directly with a, with a, with a lender. We've already got construction terms, term sheets in hand and, uh, my company and an S, there'll be an SPE form to own it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yeah, and the, uh, you know, we, we, we are submitting for the pilot and the air rights. So there's gonna be a breakdown of costs as part of that application for the pilot agreement, which, you know, you, the, you guys will all see, certainly the, that, you know, the, the group that sees it all.
Got it.
And we gave a breakdown of costs, I think, as part of the RFP answer as well, right Jeff?
Right.
If I can ask as an aside, Mr. President, as well, I'm not sure who's still sharing their screen, but if we're done with the presentation, could that be turned off so at least everyone's visible again? Thank you.
Again, City Council, I can ask you on my screen. So if you have a question, please speak up and answer a question.
Joe Byrne. Uh, thank you, uh, for, thank you for coming tonight. I, I love the, uh, the idea of the project. It looks quite beautiful. In regards to the parking spaces, I s, I mean, I assume any two-bedroom, that there's gonna be a lot of people with, with two cars. So will they be told that they can't park their second car in there or, or they just have to pay more? I mean?
Um, that would be subject to availabilities. What we're looking at, um, uh, getting into an arrangement with the city would be, um, a, a parking agreement that would include 120 spaces. But those other residents that might need an additional space, you know, they would be, you know, looking, uh, you know, on their own to find, uh, you know, another spot. So, you know, maybe it's, um, you know, elsewhere in the garage or maybe elsewhere in the city.
Okay.
So I think for urban project, um, this, this kind of parking, I think, is actually very, very good. Um, um, but, uh, as it is now though, the parking agreement we're looking at with the city would include 120.
Hmm. And, uh, Jeff, I could just, uh, jump on that. Um, I, obviously the council members know that, that we have, you know, Laz manages the parking garage. And there's a certain, you know, percentage, um, where there'll be monthly Parkers and then a certain percentage that's open to the public. So at a certain point, you know, we oftentimes will hit the max of how many monthly, um, you know, permits that we, that we will issue so that, so that the whole ramp doesn't become, you know, just for, for monthly Parkers. So, um, we have the ability to control that as well, Councilman Burns.
Thank you. And then on the, uh, the market rates, and we talked about empty nesters, and there is a shortage of, of, of places for empty nesters to go to in Binghamton. I know, uh, a lot of them who would love to downsize, but at $1,500, I'm, I don't know if they'd be able to afford that. I mean, is there any room to put a certain percentage of the, of them, uh, you know, 10 apartments or something that would be come down for the, uh, empty nesters or anything like that? For lower income?
We, we did, uh, we did quite a bit of analysis of looking at, um, trying to do some, you know, under-market rents and whatever, um, whatever approach might be there. Um, you know, if, if we were going to be lowering rents, it would be a matter of looking for other ways to bring down project costs through, um, or, or other subsidies from other sources in the city. And it didn't look like, you know, what we were already doing, uh, with the pilot and the air rights. Um, it just really didn't work out. Um, you know, we, we think this is a strong market, but it's not the strongest market in upstate New York. Um, you know, we, we feel good about it, but I don't think there's a lot of, uh, uh, room. If, uh, we couldn't lower some rents and, and, uh, and raise others, that just didn't really work. Um, you know, I will add a minute to folks that are used to the, uh, traditional apartments in, in Binghamton over the last 30 years, it seems high. We heard that going into 50 Front Street, uh, that, uh, the rents that we were needing to, uh, um, have there to make that project work. People thought we would never get those rents, but, uh, we were pre-leased, uh, 80% before we opened and then it's leased up within three or four months. And they have a waiting list. So, um, I, I think there is a market, uh, segment where this really will work. But I think in terms of, uh, having some under-market rents here, as far as the financial structure of the project is right now, uh, we, we couldn't find a way to, to make that work.
Yeah, I would just add, there's a need for new apartment product in the, in the city of Binghamton in the area. Um, we have a experience in that, going into communities where maybe new apartment product hasn't real, hasn't been really built. Uh, we did a very, we've done a very successful projects in Utica, New York. And, uh, the, uh, individuals that are renting, it was a combination of garden buildings and townhomes. And the individuals that are renting there are, uh, young professionals, um, and, uh, baby boomers, empty nesters, not a lot of small families. And the, um, a lot of people working at the hospitals. Uh, Utica's got a professional hockey team. Um, we got a lot of, a lot of those, uh, people that rented. Uh, and our rents there go from, you know, 1,500 to 2,500 a month. So, um, they, it's been very successful. We have, we're, we're 120% leased. We've been 100% occupied leased. We finished that project in the, uh, August of 2018. Um, and it's, you know, I, I get alerts on, uh, all the leasing and the new, and it's amazing to me the amount of people that are coming into the community, into the Utica area. And I'm, it's very similar to Binghamton with all, with the, uh, sciences and the, uh, the healthcare and everything else. Um, and the, and the colleges and the universities. I mean, we have people living in Utica, the professors, you know, teach at Hamilton. And it's just because it's a great product type that, you know, and it's new and cutting edge. And, you know, that's what this is gonna be. So, um, yeah, and it's pretty amazing. You know, do where the, uh, the, the demos, uh, lay out, but where the renters actually come from. Um, so we see a very, see a similarity here occurring.
Hey, uh, is anything included in the rent electricity or air, like, uh, Riverside Towers, I know that like the air conditioning and everything is included. I'm wondering, or is that additional?
Um, that would be additional.
No, your, the utilities are in the name of the resident.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Councilman Freeman, I, yeah, I've heard you speak up, I believe?
Yes, thank you. Um, thank you all for being here tonight. Uh, my colleagues stole most of the questions that I was gonna ask, so we're kind of on the same page about that. Um, so I wanted to ask a follow-up question, um, because I wanna make sure that I'm understanding this correctly. So, um, if, if I have these number, these numbers correct, the garage is going to cost 23 million and the apartment building will cost 26 million. And, um, I, the way that I, uh, interpreted this, the apartment building will be financed through a lender, but is there a funding source identified for the parking garage? Is that the same source or is there something else?
Jeff, we, we can handle.
The apartments, the apartments are financed 100% privately by the United Group. The garage, you know, has several elements. Um, you know, there is the demolition, selective demolition. Um, there is the, um, uh, the testing, uh, the geotechnical work, which is somewhat significant, that also is, um, needs to be done before the garage can really be fully designed and, um, and construction can start. And the, I think the city is looking at a couple of different, um, city-controlled sources to, um, to fund that, um, the garage, uh, the primary construction, I think will primarily be a, um, tax-exempt and combination of a taxable and tax-exempt bond. And then the city, I think, is using other resources for the demolition and for the, um, uh, the testing and geotech work.
Jeff, well, yeah, we'll, we'll delve into the, the city part of it. I, I think they, they're looking for some, probably some answers from myself and Chuck Shager on, on, on how we plan on funding the, uh, the city's portion of it. Um, you know, you, you, the housing is privately financed and that's great. One of the things that I, I meant to say at the beginning, but I forgot to, was the, one of the, uh, things that made the Pike United, uh, proposal very attractive is that it does not rely on any sort of, you know, grants or incentives, um, with regard to the housing component. They're handling this, uh, entirely privately, which frankly is rare. Uh, and it's a, and it's a positive thing. And I really wanna thank, uh, Mike and, uh, and, and Jeff and Peter, you know, for that. On the city side, it is going to be a combination of our, of our fund balance and bonding. So several of you have asked repeatedly, uh, over the course of the last several meetings, why was I specifically pushing, uh, for so much, uh, under the revenue loss portion of the ARPA funds? This was one of the projects that we had in mind, uh, for utilizing this. Because I think many of you know that parking ramp projects are money losers, which is why the, it usually falls to the municipalities. And one of the things that we, we strived for on the Seven Holly Street project, and frankly, that Peter specifically was very helpful, uh, was, was making that, uh, the, as close as we could to a break-even project. And the grant that we had from ESD, that $2.1 million grant, is what helped make that project a reality. So here, it's the same sort of situation where, uh, we want to try to do the best that we can to minimize any sort of annual subsidy, um, that would exist after you factor in the parking revenue on your debt service, because the difference has to be made up by your local property taxes. And that would impact by your local property taxes. And that would impact whether or not taxes have to go up uh or not in the future. There's different types of bonding that we need to be done. Um you know, I don't know if that's if you want to get get into that. You know, we're doing different types of bonding meeting, uh different types of borrowing. So a combination of reserves and borrowing, which is in essence what we did for the Seven Holly Street project. We had a grant, we use a little bit of our reserves and we borrowed. It's the same concept here uh for this project.
It'll be three different types of bonds. So it'll be a pilot bond uh which is gonna pay for the additional cost uh to put the housing units on top of the garage. Then we'll have taxable bonds and tax exempt bonds so that we can uh do the called special parking, but allow one hundred and twenty two parking spots to go to the housing unit uh by making that taxable. We can do that legally as well as allow bascas to park there at a discount rate, which was has never been in place in the city. Uh it will be in place now. Uh once we get the guaranteed maximum price, uh we will be working with our bond attorneys to find out what amount will be uh taxable and what amount will be tax exempt. Right now, we're looking at a number probably about five million being taxable.
And this actually goes back to Councilman Scaringe's uh point that he made earlier. Um we we will not know what the guaranteed maximum prices until after the um garage is demolished and we can get um we can do the work on the the underground uh pilings to determine, you know, what can be salvaged or not. So that's that's a variable and we know what both ends of the extreme are. Um the other thing I I wanted to mention is obviously you know that the parking garage, it is completely off the tax rolls right now. There's no money being generated uh by this. And so um we we viewed this as as an opportunity um because the the ramp needs to be replaced. Um that's it's obvious to everyone, and I know that you all know that. But instead of just you know, simply tearing down a ramp and building a new one in its place, it's in a great location, is in the gateway to downtown, the heart of the business district uh located right along the river. Uh so to be able to not only build a new parking garage to meet our business and economic needs, but to bring more people living downtown and also get a portion of uh of funding on on the tax rolls. I mean, it's really a great uh it's a great win win for the city.
Thank you for that breakdown. Um I have one other question. Um I know you said that you uh analyze the um the rent prices in terms of uh providing affordable housing units and um again, if I'm understanding correctly, came to the conclusion that the price of the project would not allow for affordable housing unit. Uh but in terms of the uh the analysis that you did, I wonder if any um consideration was given to the the luxury or, you know, quote unquote, market rate housing in the area. Um I am under the impression that according to the twenty seventeen county uh housing study, the luxury housing market in Binghamton is saturated or close to being saturated. Um so I'm just wondering if you could speak a little bit more to the analysis and how um you foresee the demand for this? Uh the, you know, I don't know officially what number would qualify as luxury housing. Um but if you could speak a little bit to the how you perceive the demand for this housing at this price point uh playing out.
Well, I I wouldn't describe this as luxury. I mean, I I think it's definitely market rate um housing. Um but it it's going to be very nice. What we do in terms of demographics, um uh when we're looking at a more suburban location, we we look at a five mile radius. Uh we generally know that for projects like this, seventy percent of your residents are going to come within that radius for an urban project. Um here we think it's more like a three mile radius. So we run demographics on uh by age cohorts and in household income levels. And we then we look at capture rates with how many of those folks we think uh um within that that um young professional and baby boomer, uh those age cohorts, uh what we think our capture rate will be and uh what income levels they would need to um uh to afford the rent. So and then that helps us size a project with how many units uh that we think we'll be looking at. So that's the analysis that we did. And we we think that uh you know, the project will draw uh certainly from the city and the town of uh Binghamton, from Vestal and from J C. Uh we think also, you know, probably draw a little bit from the west, you know, from uh uh and well, in Endicott. Uh so there is probably a little bit um more of a draw from the west just based on the way the um the cities are laid out. So that we look at those incomes, we look at the number of households and we assume the capture rates that we typically uh expect to achieve. And that's how we kind of look at the number of units and the rental rates that we're we're looking to um uh to have.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Other questions, please?
This is Councilwoman Riley. I have a few questions.
Sure, go ahead, Councilwoman.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you again for the presentation. Um we did our best to kind of view the the structure of the building from the PowerPoint shared via the Zoom screen. And I know we will be receiving a packet later with some significant details so that we will be able to review. One of my questions, however, is in terms of the footprint of this new uh garage and housing unit, are you extending? Um are you changing the width of the street and and or sidewalk to accommodate? It looked it seemed again, based upon what I could see on the screen, that it was it was longer, took up more, it was a longer part of the street. And then I also have a question about the height, because it seemed as if it was significantly different from those buildings around it. So can you share information about the footprint and the height?
Uh I can certainly answer the question on the footprint. The footprint is less than the existing garage. The existing garage uh goes uh sidewalk to sidewalk uh on on uh each side and then extends uh to the men's department and then over the top of the men's department. Uh the new structure will will uh be respectful of the existing sidewalk. That sidewalk, of course, will uh we expect it will be damaged uh and torn up uh when the garage comes down and a new sidewalk will be put in place exactly in the same uh dimension as you currently have, and there'll be no no disruption to the size of the street. Uh relative to the height, I'll turn that back to Jeff because there was uh analysis done of the local building codes and exactly what we needed to do to stay within those codes. So Jeff, if you would be so kind as to answer that question.
There is a slide um uh that you'll see when you receive the PowerPoint um that we submitted. It does uh uh show the um height of the building. Um I don't have it right in front of me. I'm trying to read it on my screen, but it's too small. Um so it does comport with the zoning. Um I I think when you look at the the double tree, um uh I I think there's a there's a compatible uh or comparable building there. Um but we did look at the allowable building height and the um exhibit that's included in the PowerPoint um will show that.
Okay, um we know that the double tree is about one hundred and ten feet. But from the schematic, again, it looked like this building was taller than the double tree. And the reason I ask is because, again, uh airspace is a premium and you are mentioning that you will pay for that. But um will there be any uh sustainability or green spaces added to the height? So for example, will the will there will there there be livable roofs? What what else is being done kind of to support this extension that's taking away from what's not there now?
Right. Well, um the building I I this is compare, I don't know if it's one hundred and ten or um it's it's similar in height to the double tree. So without having that in front of me, but you you'll see that and uh um it is close in height and um it it is within the uh the zoning requirement. I I seem to think it was like one hundred and seventeen feet, but uh but don't hold me to that. You know, in terms of um uh you know, additional green space, I actually see the our landscape architect and his team actually are bugging in just as interested parties that do a lot of work in Binghamton with Scott Wyman and Catherine Cheesebro. But we really are looking at spending a lot of time particularly along the street with greening up that facade and creating uh plantings to the extent possible in a limited urban area um to uh make that pedestrian experience a little bit greener. Um there are a number of sustainable features in in the building itself in terms of being very energy efficient and sustainable. Um there is outdoor terrace space on the roof. Um so a lot of those features I I think are are positives in terms of um um the green um considerations for the construction. But I I think the primary attention uh that that we placed was really along um the street there and what we could do to uh um create that pedestrian experience as as pleasant as possible.
Thank you. Again, we look forward to receiving that information. I'm assuming also the pilot request information is in this packet of data we're we're awaiting.
We would send that to you separately, but at the same time.
Okay, we look forward to receiving that as well. Thank you. That concludes my questions.
Yeah, thanks. In regards to the to the pilot, I know that Twin Rivers, their first year before it started to go up um was the city received what we were receiving on the properties that had been demolished to build it. So the pilot didn't start at zero. I don't think any of them started zero. But where do you think uh income for the city would start in this? Any idea on that?
Um, well, that's correct with the assumption is that uh with Twin River and with Fifty Front was to have it be right out of the box, be a net gain um in in new taxes to the city. So that's correct. Here, um as Chuck was at, maybe I could maybe Chuck could explain it better, but it's a little more um complicated the way uh Chuck is looking to utilize his resources to the best advantage in terms of uh payments that we're making in terms of the um uh the pilot bond. But we're making a um uh an initial upfront payment um on the bond that is um uh um that um is is a more sizable, significant contribution. And then in the early years, the city can uh utilize those pilot payments to amortize the pilot bond, which is a a benefit for um for that financial structure. But um I don't have the pilot schedule right here. Yeah, the way that that those funds are being allocated, I think, is probably a better uh explanation coming from from Chuck.
Yeah, Jack, can I suggest that maybe maybe the better way to do this is we should we should send this information to council in advance? Um and then maybe at the next work session, you know, I think that that was what our our plan was. We have we have things that we have to send to council. And then I think in all fairness to council, um have have people come back to answer so they've got a chance to review it. Um and and they and then at the next work session, we'll talk about it in in greater detail.
Good. Thank you, man. Thanks, Daniel.
Any other questions? Thank you, everyone, for the presentation. Um we look forward to the packet. There'll be a lot more questions coming down the road, I'm sure. But again, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff.
For having us.
Mike.
Thanks for having us.
Yeah, thank you, everyone.
Thank you for your time today. Appreciate it.
Thanks you all.
All right, I'm back to the stadium district plan. Uh Wyman Design is here, I believe.
We are. Thank you.
Sorry to keep you waiting.
Not at all. It was a fascinating conversation. So uh my name's Kate Chesbrough. I'm here with my colleagues, Michelle Palmer. And uh Scott Wyman, who's principal of the firm, is joining us as well. And our primary motivation uh this evening is to not only give you a status update on the draft plan as it's developing, but to and oh, I had planned to share my screen if that can be um made available to me by the host of the meeting. Um so while we're waiting for that, but um we had distributed a flyer that um we're planning on having a public meeting to go over the plan uh on the seventh of October, which is coming up sooner than any of us um you know, knew. It's already um coming on October. But we're having a meeting at the library uh to talk about the plan and during the meeting, we'll be soliciting input on um what we've come up with so far as far as our analysis. But the priority will be for people to come and give their input on the conceptual plan that we had shared earlier with you in the process and that has not been developed very much since. Um so that we can directly respond to what we hear as priorities during that meeting. So um this flyer should be available for you all. It'd be wonderful if you can send these uh to your constituents. We'll also be um sending out physical postcards to property owners within the district. So um we wanted to share our draft of the plan as it's coming together. Um there's an extensive table of contents that is still being developed, but um essentially there are five ma- primary chapters. In the first chapter, we'll be introducing the project and uh how the project came to be, uh the funding sources, a description of our team and how we're working with the city. And talk about the project goals that we have. Uh again, some of the project goals are to support uh economic growth in the district. Uh this project is really a result of all of the efforts that went into keeping the Rumble Pony Rumble Ponies baseball team here. So we'd like to uh act on that momentum and uh work together in making a plan for improving the district as a whole. Uh we'd like to, as part of the plan, encourage high quality mixed use residential and commercial development, focus on underutilized parcels, and that includes renovations to existing buildings as well as new infill development. Uh we would like to in improve the connectivity between this area and downtown. There is an invisible but very real disconnect experientially between the downtown core and uh the district. And at the heart of it all is this document will provide the city with a long term planning pool that will guide the success of this area in downtown. As an update for where we are with schedule, um as we said, one of our significant upcoming dates is this public input meeting. Uh and we'll be meeting with this group again uh as part of the SEACR process. And we're targeting in November completion of the SEACR process so that we can wrap up any loose ends with city staff uh in the month of December. Uh so chapter two has been what we've been spending a lot of our time and energy on lately. Uh we've been doing a number of site visits and collecting photographs of the site, and we'll share some of those today. Uh we shared with you a couple of the diagrams that we prepared, and this is placeholder text as of now while we're vetting some of the text with city staff. Um these diagrams, though, look into existing conditions uh within the district. So uh we wanted to share some uh sample slides from our inventory and analysis uh on Pine Street. We're doing this on Shenango Street. you know, all of the major streets in the district, looking at them holistically, and to respond to some of the comments that we got last time about what our methodology is as far as approaching existing conditions. We wanted to share that. So we're looking at not only private properties in the district that are either residential or commercial. And we're taking an as objective as possible approach to assessing their condition and considering how those properties could be improved as part of the master plan. So we're looking at those private properties, but we're also looking at the streetscape as a whole, you know, which is all within the city right of way, and how the streetscapes could be improved, not only in terms of safety, but also in terms of aesthetics and lighting. Some of the elements that we're documenting are listed here that relate to commercial and residential properties. So you'll see that we're looking at visual character, structural integrity, street-level views into businesses that window decor, storefront decor, awning signage, all of those are more related to commercial, but then residential has a similar list. So again, we're just looking at Pine Street today, but these criteria will be used for Henry Street and others within the district. So this will be a pretty robust part of the report. But we wanted to have a pretty strong standing for where we come up with our proposals for. So this is an example of one commercial property that we felt was in good condition based on its standard of maintenance that we observed, how the sidewalks are maintained, landscape is maintained. There's detail that you can tell this business is active from outdoors, and there's adequate building lighting. And there were other commercial properties on Pine Street that could be improved. And these would be some of our priority properties within the plan. So the reason that these were selected are some poor maintenance standards for the facades, as well as the sidewalk areas, little to no landscape features or storefront opacity rather than transparency and activity. We'd like to see businesses come in and encouraged, however we can, into these properties. Residential properties that we felt were in good condition had architectural detail. Again, they're well-maintained. Not only the building itself, but also the landscape around it, as well as the street trees or other landscape features and the sidewalks near them. And properties that looked like they could use improvement are shown here, some of them. And again, these are some poorly maintained facades. There's little evidence of maintenance. At times, there's refuse in front of the properties. So we would look into ways that we can help these properties out. As part of the existing conditions analysis as well, we have engaged a traffic analysis engineer. They did their first counts last week, and we'll be meeting with them next Monday to talk about a status update. So all of these existing conditions will be talked about during our, and is really a big part of our conversations that we're having as part of the public outreach process. We've been meeting with people not only in person, but also virtually, and talking to as many as we can on the phone. The city helped provide a list of stakeholders in the area. And so the report will discuss that process. Last time we met, we talked about some of the data analysis that came out of the public survey that went out. We're nearly finished collating all of the free-form, long answers that people could give. Those gave us a lot of insight into how the general public perceives this area. And that will all be shown in graphic form in the report. And the report will also talk about how public input influences the master plan proposals. So the master plan proposals text will go into detail and is not really developed yet because we have this important step of the public meeting before then. So this is a copy of the concept plan that we shared last time. These were some of our, coming from a planning and design standpoint, some of our reactions to the existing conditions of the stadium district. This shows a number of streetscape improvements that are intended to enhance connectivity to downtown core, to the downtown core, primarily on Henry Street, but also on Court Street, as well as these connector streets, particularly Fayette, the intersections between Henry and Fayette and Court and Fayette link the stadium and the library, both of which draw a lot of people to the district. So this will be up on boards during the meeting where people can do sticky notes, and there will be at least five of our staff there to field questions. And we're really looking forward to that. And finally, the final chapter will potentially be the most helpful thing for the city as a long-term planning tool. This will be a matrix of projects that are shown in the ultimate master plan that we develop over the next few months, based on public input and what we're hearing. So this plan, this matrix will be broken into project types, like streetscapes, for example, public destinations. Destinations are publicly owned, like the stadium, the post office, and the library. Business types of projects, like incubator grants or commercial facade improvements. So this list is very much in draft, but wanted to air that it will be developed as part of the plan so that this group understands that. And in the report, we will give a preliminary indication of our understanding of potential funding sources that would support those. So whether those are city funds, New York State grant funds, or even federal, we'll put a little check there. And then there will be a planning level estimate of probable cost for each of the the project types so that the city and all of you can describe that this plan ultimately leverages X number of dollars to realize X number of improvements for the area.
Kate, you might add that we don't intend to write this in Latin, just if there's any confusion, that some of the text is all in, this is in process very much. And so now is a great time to have this conversation, to hear from you folks and the general public. But the Latin text is obviously a placeholder, as interesting as it would be to write in Latin.
No, it'll be in English. And it will, it's being written in as easy to read terms as possible, too. And there will be a long list of definitions because sometimes we can't help ourselves but use words like streetscapes, which might not translate, might as well be Latin. So with the interest of seeing all of your faces, we'll stop the screen share, and we'd be happy to take any questions there might be.
Questions, anybody?
This is Councilwoman Riley. Thank you, Council Pro Tim. Hello, everyone. Thank you again for the presentation. We look forward to all of the information that is being shared. I do have a question regarding the report, the draft that you shared. This data will not be part of the presentation during the public comment period on the seventh at the library, will it?
What?
The addresses and samples of good and bad properties?
So you bring up the most difficult part of doing an existing conditions analysis in a real city with real property owners and real people. We fully recognize the potential sensitivity there. And part of the reason we wanted to meet with all of you is directly to that point is to check in on our approach. We're using as flat of language as we possibly can, but if we'd really love to hear any ideas of how better to handle that.
Well, I will allow my other council members, particularly the council representative for that zone, that district, because, again, they will be able to speak to those business owners, their perspective, and seeing their building plastered up as a bad, you know. So I'll open, I'll allow others to speak on that. But before I do, Ken, are we going to have a copy of this prior to the event on the seventh?
It hasn't been our intention to have any hard copies as of yet because it's still in development. But if there are elements of the plan that, instead of having the whole report, that would be helpful, we could certainly do that.
I'm just thinking maybe if there is going to be a presentation presented, that we have a copy of what is presented prior to arriving at that venue so that we are informed and able to support some of the questions that may arise.
That's a really great idea. And it would be helpful, too, to have to have council be part of that discussion. So definitely in support of that.
Thank you. So I will, I don't know if Councilwoman Friedman has her hand up to discuss leaving the addresses on the properties that are good and bad, or if anyone else wants to speak to that.
It does say need improvement, by the way. It does not say bad. But we wanted to be as, you know, eligible for improvement in our language as possible so that then those property owners see them, that property in the master plan, and see that we're prioritizing filling filling the storefront or improving the facade to bring it all up to a standard.
Now, let me ask, though, is there a grant or some type of proposal to aid those owners to bringing it to the desired level?
Yeah. So that is where the matrix comes into play. And we'll have to work with the city on that list, whether it would be a good category to know whether it's a city initiative or if it's a private initiative. And perhaps there's sort of an informational component to this that lets property owners know more about the opportunities that are available. And that would be a very logical next step of the plan.
Right. Until that is formalized, though, and we know for a fact that prioritizing support of improving these individually-owned structures, until we know that we are going to do so, I would caution against, you know, highlighting those things because if you point me out, then I want your support, and I need to know how you're going to support me. So I'm just a little hesitant. But again, I'm gonna talk to everyone else.
Yeah.
Other questions?
Yeah, this is Councilwoman Friedman.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for being here and, you know, giving us that thorough presentation after waiting an hour. So thank you. Yeah, I'm glad that Councilwoman Riley brought up that point because I will be honest that I was nervously waiting to see if my my house showed up on one of those, either the good or the needs improvement. So I think I would echo Councilwoman Riley's concerns, and I think it might be best to highlight good examples and maybe highlight, instead of examples that need improvement, maybe highlight the opportunities that are available or that will become available for people to improve their properties. Or at the very least, censor the addresses. Because I did recognize all of those houses that were, you know, and I know some of the people that live in those houses. So that would be my my input to echo Councilwoman Riley's concerns. But otherwise, thank you for everything. It's evident that you are thoughtful in the way that you approach this project, so.
Well, it's an area that experienced urban renewal in a significant way. And that's part of why this master plan really is happening. There were, you know, the block where the post office is today used to be dense with houses and and buildings, but such is the way of urban change at times, too. So that existing conditions, you know, we do want there to be a rationale for why we're prioritizing areas for improvement, but in a sensitive way, it's possible.
I wonder if there could be a, maybe a list or a rubric instead of example properties, something like properties that could be eligible for, you know, let's say this possible grant that's coming in have, for example, peeling siding or unkempt lawns, or, you know, whatever their criteria are, and present it that way instead of giving pictures of things. And also that, you know, I don't know if there's a concrete rubric that was used to analyze these properties, but I think that way it maybe seems less personal and more standardized.
I mean, this could be some of the background research that goes into making the proposed plan that isn't shared as publicly.
Yeah, I think that that seems that that would be fine, I think. But yeah, the examples of poor properties.
We understand the sensitivity to that. We've been talking in the office a great deal about this. In the interest of transparency, clearly, we want to make sure that that concrete rubric, that the standards we're gauging this on are really, really clear. And there's few things as clear as actually seeing it as an image. But at the same time, pointing to people's property is hugely sensitive for all the obvious reasons. So we're struggling with this right now. We'll we'll find some solutions, but we do appreciate this conversation prior to being public.
I actually have a quick question. I've been racking my brain, too. This is Michelle. I work with Scott and Kate, to figure out if there's other ways to do that. Would you find it to be acceptable if these were example properties that don't actually occur in the district? They could just be a random northeast home somewhere that shows the kinds of conditions we're talking about. It's less, how shall I put it? It's less concrete in a way, but at least it's still visual.
And I was gonna make that same suggestion, like a home you find off Google that looks very similar, but is not the actual Pine Street location. but is not the actual Pine Street location. That would still give you the visual depiction, but not personalize it.
Or potentially.
That would mean, excuse me, but then that would mean we'd be more general in terms of the visuals. And we wouldn't do Pine Street and Fork Street and individual streets. We could do evaluations of those streets more as a rubric, as was suggested, but that the visual examples would have to be more general.
Or an idea, another idea that I just thought of is maybe taking pictures of Pine Street properties, but not in a way where the property is identifiable. Like, you know, a close up example of the siding of a house or some other kind of way where you could actually have an image of it, but not the full house or the full property and, and not tied to a specific address.
Yeah, I think that there are, there are some concerns really almost any way you cut this because we don't want to be comparing Binghamton to any other community other than itself because that's unfair. So I, okay, I, I think that we're getting good ideas out there, but I think this is, you know, this chapter two, we just didn't want the proposals to come out of nowhere. But we do want people to be excited about the proposals and understand where they're coming from and why it all connects.
And just to also add, the industry standard of doing these reports is all over the map in terms of clarity and transparency or vagueness and, and non-transparency. So we want to hit it right for this community, for this district and for this project. So again, we appreciate this conversation.
Other questions? Thank you, Catherine, everybody else for your presentation. We look forward to the meeting on the 7th of October. Again, thank you.
Great. Thanks and see you there.
Thank you.
Okay, it looks like we're ready to go. If you want to call the meeting back to order.
All right, let's, let's get this meeting back to order. Apparently, they mostly made somebody from Wyndham design a host. When she logged off, the meeting was over. So obviously, Lee and Jenny, we have to make sure that doesn't happen again. So please do a roll call, Lee. Let's get back in business here.
Okay, Councilman Skorinji.
Present.
Councilwoman Riley.
Present.
Councilwoman Friedman.
Present.
Councilwoman Burns.
Present.
Councilman Strawn.
Present.
Councilman Scanlon.
Present.
And President Restonetti is absent.
Okay, Steve Carson, are you out there?
Yes, I am.
All right, tell us about RL 21-188, please.
So both of these, both 21, 188 and 189 are related. This is dealing with the PI, the program income reconciliation. We've been dealing with HUD for, actually, since I've been here. We finally had a breakthrough with it, with the help of Paul Nelson, with the help of some HUD technical assistance, and of course with Chuck's office and then my office, finally getting it all together. But ultimately, we have, we came up with a plan and HUD approved it. So this is part of that plan. At issue is that with the CDBG budget, money was, program income was received and then not received into IDIS. Since it was all, it was not received in IDIS, it was also done, put into the budget. So there's three things there. There's the bank, there's what HUD's data shows, and then there's what our budget shows in UNIS. So that's kind of like how it all works out. With the home budget, the issue there was they were overestimating program income in the budget and not taking, not addressing it at the end of a year. So they would say that they would estimate $100,000 and then only get 50 and not fix it. So this is systemic issues going back for decades. If anyone, you know, where it started. It's just been going on for a long time and this is a way we can finally take care of this for all at once. So 188 is because we have too much money in the bank essentially. So what we're gonna do there is we've already corrected the receipts for HUD. And now this is basically just increasing the budget for the CDBG home rehab slash home purchase program by a likewise amount. The reason we do both of these programs, and we're gonna be using these in the future for program income in general, is because they're dynamic. They're based off of people needing to come in and get things. And if we do have to dip into the budgets because there's an issue, it's not gonna be problematic. So it's not like a salaries based on it. It's not like a street or park project is based on it. It's based off clients coming in looking for assistance. And then for 189, that issue is we will be decreasing. So there's HUD is seeing that we have not enough money in the bank and we're over obligated. So this is a correction to the budget because we're over obligated in home. And that program line that's being adjusted is the home rehab line. And both of these projects are very similar in scope. Both of these projects are treated very similarly. So they're, we're able to be somewhat fluid on our end to correct these things. So the 188 is to increase the CDBG homeownership rehab line by, I believe, 320,000. And then the home budget is to correct for the over allocation in, in the budget of 160,000. Since I know someone's gonna ask, at the end of the day, between the two programs, we're still gonna have about a million dollars slightly less of projects dedicated to homeownership rehab. So the city will not, the, the residents of the city will not be influenced in a negative way. We actually are having trouble spending this money because of a lack of contractors in the area due to COVID. But this is what we're gonna do for now. And this simplifies things and gets us on track and gets us squared away with HUD and our, their finding from several years ago. Any questions?
No question. Any questions, City Council? Okay, Steve, continue, please.
Thank you.
Okay, on to 21-189, or I'm sorry, 21-194, Dr. Burling, please.
Hi, good evening. I'm requesting approval for the sale of.
Dr. Burling, Dr. Burling, could you move the microphone closer to you, please?
Yeah. Okay, how's that?
That's better, thank you.
Okay, good. So I'm requesting approval for the sale of Seven Harrison. The property that had been renovated with our city's rice program is now set and ready to go. So we have a contract prepared between the city of Binghamton and the purchaser. And I'm asking for approval.
Questions or comments?
It's Councilwoman Friedman.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. I was wondering if you could explain why you are asking for this to be expedited.
Because he's in the process of obtaining financing and then banks would like to see assigned sales contracts.
And that's a, a time sensitive process or something that has an upcoming deadline?
Yep, yep.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, Dr. Burling.
Thank you.
Ron Lake?
Yes, sir.
Tell us about 192 and 193, 195, 196, still one at a time.
Mr. President, you had a, you had an additional question from Councilwoman.
Thank you, thank you.
Councilwoman Riley, I cannot see you, so I apologize. Speak up.
All right, no worries. Hi, I'm excited to hear about, I know you can't share a lot about Dr. Burling, a lot about the property owner, the one that was selected. But can you tell us a little bit about the process, how this owner was selected from all the applicants and what we look forward to because we have two more projects on the horizon?
Yep, absolutely. The application that every individual fills out that's interested in purchasing indicates they have to be low, moderate income. That's the one requirement. Then there's a series of eligibility criteria. They don't have to meet all of those. But if they meet the majority of them, then that individual is offered the opportunity to purchase. So this individual had four. I'm trying to remember what they are. It is a, oh, an employee of this Binghamton City School District, an employee of City Hall, a veteran. And if they had gone through the city of Binghamton's first time home buyer program that's offered through Metro Interface and they're certified. That's a financial counseling homeowner preparedness program. So that's, that was it. And we have a separate committee. I, you know, I, I run the grant, so I'm not on the award committee. So this is a separate committee. It consists of two city employees and three city residents that review all the applications. And then they ranked them in order of eligibility criteria. And we required proof and documentation of all of it from every applicant. And they came up with the top three individuals.
Is that a blinded review? I mean, does it have their ethnicity, name?
Their names are on the applications.
Okay, so there could, well, when, okay, thank you.
If you would prefer, I mean, this is the first one we've done. So we are open to suggestion and modification. If there's something you'd like us to change or add, just please email me and we'll, I'll bring it up with the committee.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, and the other two projects are nearing their time.
92 Park is basically ready, but we're now looking at having it sited. The, the first floor retail area, you can literally see through the, there's gaps in the wall. There's no insulation and you can see outside. So it is not weather tight at all. So we're having a quote prepared to have that sited. So it might take a little longer, but I think it's worthwhile. And then the other one, 50, I think it was 57 Glenwood, we're receiving bids right now.
Awesome. Thank you for that update.
Yep, absolutely.
Other questions or comments?
Yeah, I have one.
Councilwoman Burns, go ahead.
Thank you. I may have missed it with all the confusion getting back on here, but the financing, does the applicant then find their own financing?
Yes.
Through a bank or how is it financed?
That's what this individual is doing. If somebody had cash and preferred to do that, they just have to secure financing.
Okay, so it's private financing. Okay, thanks.
Other questions or comments?
Juliette, I just wanted to say I know a lot went into this. So to you and everyone on the committee, well done because I know this has been very, very time intensive on all of your guys' parts. So well done.
Thank you.
Yes, excellent, actually. Very good.
Thank you, Dr. Burling.
All righty.
Ron Lake, how about 192, please?
Okay. This is to continue with the upgrades to the water treatment plant. And this is for professional services to design the filter media and replacement for, the filter media is all wore out and needs to be replaced. This does the design and replacement and the bid documents for doing that.
Questions or comments on this? Councilwoman Friedman, please. Councilwoman Friedman?
Oh, you can see me.
I can see you now, yes. I see you, I see you and Ron. That's all I see, though.
Okay, thanks.
You're the only ones here.
So on this RL, it says that GHD is the most qualified consultant. Can you tell us a little bit more about what was the selection process for that?
We advertised, we received two proposals and we reviewed the two proposals and the other, the other firm just didn't have the knowledge of the filler system that GHD did.
Okay.
Other questions or comments? Okay, run on to 193, please.
Okay. This is for supplementary agreement. I believe I'm on the right one, to continue monitoring inspection of the existing project, which was the sludge project at the water treatment plant. The original time allotment that they had given us in their original proposal is at an end and it needs to continue for another month or so. And that's what this is to do is to, actually, it's about three months, I think, to get to the end and wrap up and get the asthma drawings or the work that's going on now at the water treatment plant.
Questions or comments on 192, or 193, I'm sorry? Okay, Ron, move on to 195, please.
So this is Councilwoman Friedman. I thought you said you could see me.
I, I'm not looking, but I can see you now. Go ahead.
Could you just explain why you are asking for this to be expedited, please?
Say again?
Could you please explain why you're asking for this to be expedited?
I still get the question.
Ron, why are you asking for this to be expedited?
Oh, why are we asking for it to be extended?
Yeah, expedited, yeah.
Okay, because, because the construction work is not done yet and we need to have it monitored and reviewed. And their original proposal, which only take them, took them up to this date. So the project needs to continue and it needs to be inspected.
Is that, so the, the deadline is coming up? Sorry, I did?
Yes.
Okay. I see. Okay, thank you.
Other questions, other questions or comments on this? Ron, RL 195, please.
I believe this is for the, this for the wastewater treatment plant. It's to provide for, again, for professional services, which would be with GHD, to provide us with the record drawings, which PC Construction has refused to do. And the plant is desperately going to need these drawings in future years. And we will attempt at least to get this money back from PC.
Questions on RL 21-195? Okay, Ron, on the RL 196, please.
This again is for another situation where the construction is not done due to delays in getting materials and COVID. And the professional time limit that we had in their proposal is run out of time and they want an additional fee to get it. And this is for Rec Park and basically for finishing up the ice rink.
Questions or comments on 196?
I have a question about Rec Park.
Yes, go ahead with Councilwoman Burns.
I'm, I'm wondering about the, the tennis court. Did they, have we figured out what the water is from and all that?
We have not, and I have not accepted them yet.
What do you mean, what do you mean by that?
Well, they still need to be looked into. We have a meeting coming up with a consultant who designed them. And we'll be looking into it. But at this point, I don't have an answer for why we keep getting the water bubbling out. And we will before we're done.
Okay, thank you.
But if there needs to be repairs, they'll be done.
President.
Thank you.
And that's, that's kind of why I said I didn't accept it yet, because if there's something that's got to be done, it's going to be done.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Grinji?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, thank you, Ron. Um, the sealant was put down on the courts, right? The protective sealant with respect to, because we've had a lot of rain that's been coming down over the last couple of weeks or so. And I know that impacted construction and updates as well, correct?
Yes, there's, there's normally four layers that would go down.
Right.
We now have eight layers.
Okay, and um with respect to the painting and the nets, is there, I mean, it's, it's available, correct? Not withstand.
It is residents, residents are playing on it.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah.
The high school played some on it. Uh, Binghamton U will not play on it.
Okay. Thank you, Ron. Thank you, Mr. President.
Other questions or comments?
Yes, this is Councilwoman Riley.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Okay. Wait, does someone else have something to add? Okay. Um, I, I do see this extension of services that this is an additional bill we are now being charged because um of the tennis court and ice rink, per this letter, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so our original contract uh didn't cover ensuring these things were completed in a certain time to where we will not have to pay for additional services?
Their original estimate of time uh i- is up. They, they give us a proposal for so many weeks or so many days of, of professional services. And that's the contract that was originally signed for that. And that time has elapsed and some of it is not, is not due to anything the contractor did. But it's due to the fact that material deliveries were much longer than what was expected. And getting items and the chiller took much longer for the ice rink. And then NICE Seg changed its mind. Originally, they said that we could do it with one, one-twenty, two-twenty uh electric service. They changed their mind and said we had to go to four-eighty. So that was one of the things where a new line had to be brought in. And they gave us the polls, but we had to pay for the, so service. So there's a whole bunch of things that have prolonged that project.
Okay, so is it likely that we may have to come back to the ta, if this is approved with the timeline they have proposed, we propose to provide these services, blah, 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 not to exceed twenty-five thousand, is it likely that they can rectify the things that are listed within, within the timeline proposed? Or might we have to come back to the table with another extension?
And unless something, something happens that we're not aware of, this should conclude the project.
Okay, and I guess this last question is for Chuck. I don't have the budget in front of me. This budget line was the original budget line from which the upgrades and everything were taken from originally? Is this the same budget line?
Let me, thanks, let me look up just to make sure. I believe so.
And so there's, there's enough money in this line remaining to where we will not have to pull money from any other lines to cover this additional fee?
If this line is on there, there was enough money on there when it came by my office to do.
So that's yes?
Yes.
Okay. And can you tell me the, the, the balance in this budget line?
I can't tell you right now, but I can definitely let you know in the morning.
Oh, that would be great. That's fine. Because if we have to come back again for an additional twenty-five thousand dollars to rectify, because again, because the ice rink has not uh, has not been completed. And there may be additional tests and additional things that are found once Ron and his crew inspect. We may have to come back again. So we need to be certain we have enough in our, our funding sources, in our revenue, in our uh budgetary lines to continue to support these projects.
Angela, sitting in my office, I was able to just pull it up and there's seventy-nine thousand dollars left in that line. But I don't know, is there some change orders still available on some of the lines that if we have a change order that we can still use it without digging deeper into that account number?
Okay, okay. But then you, you can investigate that and give us an update. But we're okay for this twenty-five, twenty?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Hey, Ron, can you stay there? I need your help on this next one.
Yes.
Chuck, tell us about one ninety-seven, please.
One ninety-seven is an RL to increase the engineer that gets paid out of our uh insurance fund uh transferring six-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars between now and the end of the year. Basically, what happened is uh we hired someone else uh with less experience, I believe, than this person and uh that person is making more money than a person that's already on board. So this six-thirty-five brings him uh up to the level of that other person. Is that correct, Ron?
That's correct, and it's at a level where he should have been because he's a, a four-year grad too. So he was not being paid properly.
Questions or comments on one ninety-seven? Okay, Chuck, on uh one ninety-eight, please.
One ninety-eight, this is a RL uh transferring unspent um money from the police services uh from people that have retired and we have not been able to fill the positions, as well as defund the assistant police chief uh that retired in uh February, I believe. And we're moving those funds to hire a, an additional captain, one more than we currently have. But we're also defunding the assistant chief. We want to add seven patrol officers. And then to pay for their uniforms and uh things of that nature, as well as increasing the salary of the police chief, the assistant chief, and the fire chief. Along with that, we want to take two-hundred thousand dollars and transfer it to capital account. When we were doing the budget, um, there was a series of capital items that uh came about that people needed. So we're utilizing this two-hundred thousand dollars out of the police funds uh to buy IT equipment. And the parks were buying zero-turn mower, tractor installer, an infielder, three-wheeler, a flail motor, fixing the DPW front gates, as well as buying some DPW traffic controllers. I know there's a lot on this RL and I'm sure there'll be questions.
Questions on this, please?
This is Councilwoman Riley. Um, I noticed we're starting to blend DPW um and police and fire legislation. Is there a reason why?
In this case, we're u- utilizing two-hundred thousand dollars of unspent police funds to buy some capital items for parks and DPW, IT, and other areas. That's why that was added here.
Okay, and then my question regarding the raises. These raises are part of the contract that we just approved, so it will be for twenty-twenty-two?
No, this will go into effect on November first, I believe, was the date that was on the RL. Uh, the assistant chiefs and the chiefs are not part of the contract. They, they do get raises equal, that's tied to the contract. This is uh on top of that.
Okay, and you said there was a, a previous RL that speaks to this raise at this time?
No, the, the raises in this are out here. So effective, um, I gotta pull it back up here.
I, I don't see any, any dates.
It goes into effect, if it's not on there, it was scheduled to go into effect in November first, is what I did all the calculations based off of. So the uh assistant police chief is going to get one-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars and ninety-six cents from November first to the end of the year, additional funds.
Okay, and these are, the, again, explain to me where these are merit-based, these are?
Well, part, part of it has to do with the fact that we're defunding a assistant chief and the chief and the assistant chiefs are going to pick up additional duties with that one less person. And the captain is going to be working more in the intel center where they need uh save more hands-on. I have the chief here, if you want him to explain why they wanted a captain and the importance of that position.
No, I didn't know. I wanted to know were the, these raises merit-based or how they were derived, was it? And you did explain that and the dates. So no, I don't need that. Now, in terms of the seven patrol officers, this is different from what was projected when we did the budget around this time last year.
What, let me explain that. Uh, we currently have, I think, fourteen empty positions right now. We're going to have two more leave before the end of the year, which will leave us, I think, a total of sixteen uh come January first. There's a list out there of police officers and we thought it was in the best interest to try to get some of the better people on the list and wait till next year and get people on the bottom of the list. So if, if we can hire seven, we're not going to guarantee that we can hire seven, but this will give us the opportunity to start interviewing them and hopefully be able to hire seven of them.
Okay, and what is our, our current uh total number of officers uh that?
So we have one forty, but right now we're down to one-twenty-six, I believe, with the fourteen that were short.
Thank you for that information. That concludes my questions.
Other questions or comments?
Yeah, um, I have, I have a question.
Councilwoman Burns?
Yeah, uh, Chuck, so this seven patrol officers, they were already budgeted?
Yes, they're part of the hundred and forty that we have budgeted. Okay, but they, we've had people leave all during the year. We're down fourteen from January first till today with the intention of two more leaving that we're aware of before the end of the year. So it was, right now, there is a list out there and if we wait till next year, we may lose some of those what else say, people higher up on the list.
Okay, all right, thank you. I got it. Thank you very much.
Other questions or comments?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Grinji?
Thank you, Mr. President. Hey, Chuck, how are you?
Good.
Good. Um, I, I don't know if maybe you can speak to this a little bit more in depth or, or maybe the chief can elaborate if, uh, if he's able to. But um, I know retirements are a concern, right? So even if we hypothetically hired seven, which, I mean, that's, that's a Halley's Comet moment, especially with a list that's already been um supplemented from the last round of testing. But my understanding from talking to some of the uh officers is retirements currently and coming up are an issue. So it's kind of almost like we're still at a net negative, if you will. Is that kind of the case?
The, the numbers of people that we currently have at twenty is getting smaller and smaller.
Right, right.
We are, people that are coming up on twenty years are leaving. They're no longer staying for twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-six. There's really not a whole lot of incentive for them to do that.
Right.
But I, I think going forward, hopefully, the, the quantity that leaves is going to be less because I don't think we're going to be having as many coming up on retirement age.
Okay, that's good to hear. Thanks, Chuck.
Other questions or comments?
This is me, hello. Thank you, hello. Uh, I do have a question. I know it may not directly apply. But I know uh Officer Woody talked about an initiative to recruit uh the minoritized previous applicants or something. He had four people he was working with. Do you know if they have, if they are in the runnings for the positions, if that has been successful, his initiatives? Perhaps maybe?
I, I don't know that answer, but we can try to get that answer for you tomorrow. I don't think the chief knows that as he's sitting here.
Okay, is he, is he shaking his head yes or no?
He says he is unsure.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments?
This is Councilwoman Friedman.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, hi, Chuck. Uh, so I um, I just have a follow-up question about the nu, the number of police officers, because I, I'm a little bit confused. So I'm looking at the um, the uh the adopted budget and I see, I did mental math, so it could be a little bit off, but there's about a hundred and I think it was a hundred and one officers plus the eight vacancies that were in the contingency plus the two new police officers from the cops grant. So where does the one forty or one-twenty-six, where, where is that number coming from?
I think you're not counting like all the supervisors, the captains, lieutenants, sergeants, and things of that nature.
Oh, so the one hundred and forty figure, that's the total?
That includes everybody.
Employees, not just patrol officers?
Well, beside the, the sergeants, the lieutenants, the captains, the uh, I think it includes the assistant chief and chief too in that one forty number, correct, chief? Yes. It does not include, it does not include the civilian employees that work, you know, on other cases, not patrol, patrolling, but like we have people that do their payroll, that pay their bills and things of that nature. That's not part of the one forty. We're talking about police officers from a, you know, probationary up to the chief.
Okay, so the administrative uh positions are counted in that number as well?
They are now, like, if you look on there, you'll see an administrative assistant and two administrative assistants and program assistants. That's not part of the one forty, just police officers, people with a badge.
Okay, so the um, I think Councilman Burns asked about this, but I just want to follow up. The, the seven patrol officers, uh, the, the first budget line or the first line item, that those are not additional positions that are being created? Those are em, currently empty positions that are being filled?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so then um, wouldn't they then already have been budgeted?
Payouts and stuff, and they, they were budgeted, okay? But anytime that we're going to do something with personnel like this, we're, we're emptying out uh, we're not hiring someone at the salary of that person. Example being if a if you look at your budget, a grade one at seventy-eight thousand, we're hiring someone down at the thirty-eight thousand dollar range. We, we got to change the numbers in those positions. To, to make it simple, if you look at your two thousand and twenty-one budget, there was seventy grade one officers. If seven of these people retired, that number is going to go to sixty-three and we're going to bring up the probationary that had four up to eleven.
Okay, so it, this serves to keep the number of officers the same, but have more higher-paid police officers?
No, we actually have lower-paid police officers because we're losing someone that's at the seventy thousand dollar level and we're going to hire someone at the thirty-eight thousand dollar level.
Okay. Uh, okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Chuck, I know one ninety-eight, please.
Let me pull that up here, scroll down. Okay, during this year, uh, the parks department use more I'm gonna say lifeguards than they normally would. Uh, when we did the budget last year, we cut it short because we didn't know what COVID was gonna bring, so they're over budget by twenty-three thousand dollars. We're taking money from other parks lines to to cover that.
Question or comments on this? Okay, Chuck, on the two hundred, please?
Okay, number two hundred is the water department is running out of castings this year, so we're moving money from a CSO upgrades line to a casting lines for twenty-six thousand dollars.
Question or comments on this? Okay, Chuck, on the two oh two, please?
Two oh two is a refunding of a two thousand and fifteen bond. Going through the process, the city will save uh, one million two hundred ninety-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy cents over the next nineteen years by doing this.
Question or comments on this?
Lee, I think we need to have a public hearing on this.
Okay, we can add that for Wednesday to set the public hearing.
Okay.
No question? Any question or comments on this one?
Yeah, this is Councilwoman Friedman. Does the pub- does the public hearing have to be at least twenty-four hours? Doesn't there have to be at least twenty-four hours notice?
So this is us setting the public hearing for Wednesday and we're we're announcing public hearing on Wednesday and then we're I holding it two weeks from now.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Shager.
Welcome.
Under RL two one dash two oh three, Mr. Pierceall.
Good evening. Ah, well, I'm patient. The board in our hourly union came to an agreement. The twenty-twenty-one year was a negotiation year. So the union and the board arrived at a five-year agreement. And part of that agreement affects budget year twenty-twenty-one. So we're asking for money to be transferred out of contingency, the amount of sixty-six thousand, thirty-nine dollars, three cents to add fifty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars to a merit pay line, which is personal services. It's all paid at the same. And that is a one-time payment to thirty-one hourly positions that were filled as of August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. The other portions of that, there's seven thousand, six hundred thirty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents to increase the state retirement based on that numbers and four thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-eight cents for social security. And the contingency line did have much, some money in there anticipating an increase for twenty-twenty-one because the last agreement we had was twenty-twenty and we knew one was in in the works.
Questions or comments on this? Charlie here, nobody, I believe we're all set. Thank you, Charlie. Appreciate it.
Alrighty, have a good night. Thank you.
You too. Thank you. Okay, look over the pending legislation. If you have any questions or anything, let I'll give you a couple of seconds to do that. Any concerns on the pending legislation, speak up, please. Again, I cannot see you, so just speak up.
There are no questions, Mr. President. I'll make a motion, would you?
No, I have a question that's not pertaining to the pending legislation.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Counselwoman.
Thank you. So you know, we are approaching budgetary review time. Is there a calendar, a proposed calendar that we will be discussing soon?
I but I believe the way it works that the the finance chairperson, which is Councilwoman Strong, will put a calendar out there. I don't know if we're gonna be discussing it because um, they'll they'll put the calendar together. Councilwoman Strong, feel feel.
Yeah, uh, Lee did a proposed one, but then uh, Chuck Shager and Lori Clift expressed some concerns as to the uh there was basically there was four proposed dates. I think that's what we did last year. So actually, this is a good time. I mentioned this in an email. If we have, I know it's been long, but this is important. Last year, we did do it pretty aggressively and it got really long, but we got it done just so that the proposal for four days might be too short, um, creating really long days. Uh, Chuck and Lori expressed concern about, you know, in essence, twelve-hour days, which would really kind of be the same for us if if people are working. Uh, but I don't wanna do it every night for two weeks or anything like that. I mean, what what is the preference as we look at it? Would we would we look to extend the four days to maybe five or six to to spread it out just a little bit so they're not quite as long marathon sessions? Or what does what do people think as as we went through it last year? I think we did four times last year and two of them. At least two of the days got real really late. Which does is hard to concentrate after a while. I understand what they're saying, but.
I was concerned when we had a budget meeting right before a council meeting and it ran into the work session, I think. And it extended it our time even more so. So if we could at least separate work sessions and council dates from the budget dates, that I would I would have, I think that would help us in terms of managing all the data that's presented.
So not have not have them overlap each other. I think I think the proposal was for one of them, like the effect that in two weeks. So the the original proposal, he had had us going next week, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, and then the following Monday. Which is pretty aggressive for that that much much stuff, so.
Especially without a warning. If you're planning for next week and we don't even know.
Well, that was from that was from Lee, so let me let me let me dig in with uh Chuck and or I'm sorry with Lee and then let's let we'll propose, maybe we'll skip Mondays if we can go next, maybe next Wednesday or Thursday. And at least started, I think we have a deadline. Lee, what's our deadline that we're working up against? We have to have it done before the twentieth of October. Is that right?
Well, council um has to pass it by October thirtieth at the latest, but we also have to post the public hearing for the budget and that has to be posted at least five days prior to the public hearing, so that backs us up a few days. So um, I think Friday, the twenty-second is what we were aiming for to have everything wrapped up by.
Actually, Lee, I think you wanted it to be done by the fifth, by the thirteenth, so that on the twentieth at the council meeting, you could have the public hearing. I think is what your original thought was.
Right, if we wanted to avoid having special meeting at the end of October, obviously, we'd have to back it up even more from there.
So Councilwoman Strong, I would suggest you keep the sched- the tenant schedules you used to out there. And you can email it out tomorrow, maybe um, to city council members about Monday, Wednesday, Thursday. Because in case something happens, the interim, I I don't think we wanna be right against the deadline here.
Yeah. Councilman, if 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 I may, just to offer some advice, so maybe instead of four days, put it, put it to five. And then we can have a sixth day that just acts as a backup. If anything gets carried over and we need it. And Chuck and Lori and the mayor's office are are usually pretty good about this on an annual basis. There are some sections of the budget that can be done pre-work session or pre-business meeting because they're small, like for example, city councils section of the budget. There are own, there are a number of areas that we can knock out fairly quickly that are quite literally only a handful of pages. So um, maybe at least one of those days can overlap, so we can get those less labor-intensive areas done and out of the way. And I mean, four days is aggressive, but I mean, we've definitely consistently done it in five in the past, so um, I think five and then a sixth day just for emergency purposes should be sufficient.
I concur with that. I concur with Councilman Scritti because in the past, they have given us uh, you know, budgets that are small, like you say, to to work before the before the work session or before the business meeting. So and it we get those done quickly, so that makes sense to continue. That's worked for the past seven years.
Well, last year did not. I I want you guys to kind of reflect upon that meeting that was extended. And look at what budgetary items we were discussing prior to the work session because it did lead into the meeting. I can't recall right now, but we definitely have notes that we can refer to 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 kind of determine what those budgetary items were. We happen to have a shortened work session, you know, the agenda was very short, which worked out. But however, like today, we may have a guest, you know, you never know.
If we do anything, we'll try to do it so it's just before, but not after. I think one of them had it before and after, I believe, last year that happened. Try to have it so it's not, it's not after. Um, so we'll try, uh, Lee, let's work together tomorrow and try to have something out tomorrow. We were gonna have it out probably today. We took a pause after the concerns expressed by by Chuck and Lori. Um, so I apologize for that, but we wanted to to at least acknowledge their concerns of the timeframe and and uh, or or how long that the sessions had. And I guess we can leave room to end it and carry something over like like Councilwoman Scritti said to a sixth day, if it gets so long that it becomes, you know, we're we're, you know, losing ground because we're getting too tired, so.
Right.
Just I guess we'll leave leave room on certain days to to uh, end if we need to.
Can I ask? Sorry, I can, I I apologize. I did not mean to interrupt.
No problem, go ahead.
Um, I I was wondering if I could ask Councilman Scritti and Councilman Scanlon, how many days in the past, like before this city council? You know, in your last term, how many days did the budget process typically take up?
Not many, not many at all. At at the expense of being blunt, Councilwoman Friedman, i- it really comes down to it really comes down to not questions in and of themselves from respective council members, but the preparation and the proactiveness of those questions. So what helps is essentially, at at least in my experience, I found combing through the budget and in those respective sections prior to the sections being reviewed that evening. Now, of course, that doesn't mean that a a very legitimate good question can't come to your mind in that moment, and if it does, I absolutely ask it and try to get the answer, but you know, I mean, I I know, I'm fairly certain, I know Councilman Strong has, Councilman Scanlon has, I have, I mean, we've all been finance chairs in the past. I mean, I I know when I did it, it was four or five days, and I think that's pretty consistent with Councilman uh, Strong and Councilman Scanlon, so.
Yeah, I remember, I remember getting it done in four days and a few years in a row, Joe, and sometimes it was never a sixth day. We, not that that can happen because there could be enough questions where requires a sixth day. We all, we get.
Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, if it's necessary, they're legitimate questions, we obviously should take the time, absolutely.
It's a process and if you have questions, certainly ask them. I mean, so if it takes six days, it takes six days. That is what it is, you know?
Yeah, absolutely.
The reality of this budget for everyone, I think it's a pretty simple budget. It's, I think we've added two positions. We may have unfunded two positions. There's raises in there that you guys have approved so far. Um, I believe health insurance is about the same. Retirement. I don't have the numbers yet on that. That may hopefully go down, that you guys can reduce and put into contingency. Uh, but the state has not released those numbers yet for us. But for the most part, it's a very clean budget and there's no, there's not a whole lot of capital out there either.
I um, I definitely I know it may not seem like it cuz I do tend to ask a lot of questions at every meeting. I certainly don't want to extend the meetings longer than they need to be, uh, but I do I worry that we might uh prioritize efficiency at the expense of transparency and what I mean by that is that certainly if there's questions that can be asked beforehand in an email, definitely that that should be done. Um, I have had constituents contact me after other meetings saying that the questions that I asked during the meeting helped them understand what was going on. So I do think that there is value in asking questions on the record in front of uh, council and also, you know, we're streaming to YouTube, so anybody that's tuning in might better be able to understand what's going on. That's not to say that we should have long meetings and ask redundant or very specific questions just for the sake of doing it that way. Um, but I think it's important to balance those two aspects of not using up a lot of people's time, but also not doing too many things behind the scenes, which uh, can come across as us um, a- as government bureaucracy, I guess, for for lack of a better word. So that's just what comes to mind when I when I hear about, you know, when we're considering doing the budget in as few days as possible. So I just wanna put that out there as a uh, something to consider.
All right, we'll try to get it, we'll try to get a draft schedule out by tomorrow afternoon at the latest.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Strong. I do have another question. I I do. Um, and I don't know, is Lee still there? In the parks? Window? Okay, hi, Lee. I just need clarification. We've been getting a lot of emails, at least I have, about foil processes. Can you explain to us what is the expectation and how we can mitigate some of these emails we're receiving?
Yes, so the foil process, I mean, it's a lot of it is outlined by New York State and we follow that. And someone submits a foil to our, through our website. And then we, you know, in the clerk's office, do our due diligence and we circulate it to whichever department it might correspond to. And we try to formulate a response.
So the delay may be due to lack of response of another department? What 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 is? Help me understand so that.
A lot of, a lot of factors go into it. Sometimes the items being requested are more complicated than they might appear. Uh, it's pretty rare that someone asks for one specific document that we can just pull out and give to them. It's usually a series of documents like communications between X, Y, and Z company. Those sorts of things, and those do take time.
Now, are there other departments that are integral part of this process? Do you need us to assist in any? I mean, tell me. So once you receive it, you send it out?
So once
Okay.
Uh, we try to collaborate with the court counsel and whichever the corresponding departments are. And we formulate a response and trying, you know, if it's over a certain number of pages, we try to give a page estimate. Sometimes they do cost money and we, you know, once we receive the payment, then we begin the actual production. And obviously, we wanna review them to make sure we're, if there's anything that needs redactions, those sorts of things.
Okay, and so the longest time it has ever taken to complete a foil request has been can you give me like a the worst-case scenario on the best-case scenario?
Uh, they certainly take a lot of time. Um, sometimes they're even retracted because of how long they can take depending on how expansive they are. I, it's not uncommon for us to receive some that take months.
Okay.
And obviously, our our office has been inundated in the last year or two with a lot of requests.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you for clarifying because as you know, you've been a part of the emails as well, so I wanted to know but our, what are best practices and what is typical? So that we can provide the best information for our constituents.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments before we adjourn the meeting?
Second.
I make sure most people adjourn.
Second. Have a good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.